Good evening. How's everybody doing? I did look at the temperature. It's 80 degrees out there, but we know that winter is, at least fall, is coming. We're gonna have a little change in the air and the atmosphere in the next couple of days. I don't know if you were up early, early this morning, but it was in the 60s, so quite nice. A lot of energy in the room. I really appreciate you being out with us this evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone here on this fine Tuesday, October 28th. Did you know that on this day in 1886? Anybody know? No? The Statue of Liberty was officially dedicated on this day in 1886. So that's the lasting symbol of hope and opportunity. And I would say this, that education carries that same weight, that same spirit of hope and opportunity. So the Board, the Superintendent and I were pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate student achievement. We're gonna review information tonight. We do have some policy decisions to make in our public hearing as well as it relates to the effective operation of the Polk County School Board. And I would like to call the October 28th, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. So if we can all please stand. And Bishop Mincy, would you please give our invocation this evening? And if you could just please remain standing for the pledge as well.
And we bow our heads for a word of prayer. Kind Father in Jesus' name, we are grateful for the gift of this wonderful day. This is the day you made. We will rejoice, we will be glad in it. Thank you for the privilege that you've given unto us to come together tonight in this boardroom. We thank you for the Board members. Thank you for Superintendent. Thank you for all of the staff. Thank you for Polk County Public Schools. Thank you, oh God, for every student that comes to our schools. We ask for your continued blessings and your guidance and your protection over this district. We ask that you would be with us and encourage us in decisions that are made at this meeting and the other meetings that will continue to be a blessing to our children. We pray tonight, Lord Jesus Christ, that this meeting will be a fruitful meeting and that we will leave and be blessed and encouraged to continue in the fight. Be with us now and bless as only you can, and we will give you the glory, the honor, the praise, and we will tell you thank you for all things. We ask it in your wonderful name, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Mincy. Samuel, if you can step forward and lead us in our pledge this evening, feel free to, yeah, grab that, you can pull it down. Excellent.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated, except for our special guest tonight. So we said that we're here to celebrate student achievement, and we want to celebrate you and the great work that you are doing as a student. So, so glad that you're here. If you could introduce yourself and any guests that you have with you tonight.
My name is... My name is Samuel Spalding, and I'm nine from Loughman Oaks Elementary School. My dad right here is the dean, is the dean of Loughman Oaks and used to be a mathematics and science teacher. And this is the Assistant Principal of Loughman Oaks Elementary School, Mr. Thomas. And... Where's she?
There's your mom. She's waving, you see?
And my mom, who laughed.
I see her right there. She's, she's definitely supporting you as well. That's awesome. So glad that y'all are here tonight. Appreciate that. All right, so the first question, you got a, or second question, rather, tell us a little bit about your hobbies, some things that you're interested in.
I'm interested in fishing, and I also play sports soccer, but it's really football.
Ah, is that debatable? I don't think that's a debatable question. Very good. So, okay, so fishing, are you like freshwater, saltwater? What, what kind of things are you fishing for?
Really? We don't know. We just do it for fun.
That's awesome. All right, you're witty. This is so good. All right, so I guess I'll say football. What, what position? I mean, tell me, tell me what you know about football.
My position is attacking midfield, and I play for Spartans U-10.
All right, very good, very good. And, all right, so we'll go to subjects, maybe your favorite subjects in school, or subject in school.
My favorite, my favorite subjects are math and science.
I love that. And, and we heard that a little bit about your dad. That's pretty amazing. All right, very good. Let's see, I guess future-wise, you know, we're thinking about your future. Do you have a dream? You have this vision way out, maybe next year, or five years, or 10 years? I don't know what you're thinking. But do you have this vision for the future?
Yes, I do. My vision is to play professional soccer, football actually, for one of the top European teams, Real Madrid.
Yeah, indeed.
And to, and to get a degree in science.
That's awesome. Yeah, so I, I didn't know who Real Madrid is. It's pretty terrible to me, but I did, looking at your bio, I looked them up today, I was looking at some of their players and things like that. I mean, what are some of the colors of their, their team? Do you have any players that you like?
My favorite player from the team is called Kylian Mbappe.
Wow, that's awesome. That's awesome. All right, and, and your name has a special meaning as well, I noticed, in the bio?
Yes. It's, it's a name that God answers prayers for.
Yeah, yeah, that's rich. That stuck out to me. And seeing that your family has a connection to a different place, you want to share that with us as well?
Yes. My, my, almost my entire family is from, is from Jamaica.
Yeah, yeah, indeed. The timeliness of you being here tonight is important. So we, we offer prayers up for Jamaica tonight, and that's important. So thank you for being here in a big way. So, okay, so can you, last question, can you tell us your favorite thing about Loughman Oaks Elementary?
We have the best staff on earth and...
I love that.
And we have a lot of events, like the Fall Festival, the almost summer carnival.
That's awesome.
And the Trunker Treats, and the Trunker Treat, which is in two days.
All right, all right. That is so important. We are so thankful that you're here. You're brilliant, you're doing great things, you've got a vision, keep pursuing that. So that's an inspiration to us, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Can we give him a hand? So if you could, if you could lead your family to the middle here, bring your family up and allow us to get a picture and image of this night.
Good job.
Yeah, well done. All right, thank you all for joining us tonight. All right, Board members, the first item on our agenda tonight is to accept our agenda. Superintendent Hyde, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, members of community staff. There are five adjustments to our agenda tonight. Item M number one, administrative instructional personnel actions, an attachment was added. Item M number two, non-instructional personnel actions, an attachment was added. Item O number two, an amendment to the Invo Healthcare Associates Behavior Impact Secondary Attachment was added. Item U number four, Polk County Public Schools 2026 Legislative Platform, an attachment was added and updated. Item V number two, comprehensive high school rezoning, update dated in description. That concludes the amendments for this evening, sir.
All right, thank you Superintendent. So at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for October 28th, 2025, with the noted revisions. I do have a motion by Mr. Keys and a second by Ms. Fields. So the motion's on the floor to accept the October 28th School Board Agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next up is new administrators. Superintendent Hyde, would you lead us through this one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, please join me in recognizing the following individuals. Ladraya Aikens, Head of Program at Kathleen High School, is being promoted to Acting Principal at Bill Duncan Opportunity Center.
Thank God for allowing me to be here today. And I thank God for allowing me to have this opportunity to still be a educator here in Polk County Public Schools. I want to thank my husband that's behind me that has put up with me since, since 1999. Some of y'all probably weren't even born yet, but I would like to thank him for being here with me. I want to thank my daughter and her family behind me, and also my family that are watching at this time. I would also like to thank Ms. Tracy Collins. I would like to thank Mr. Bruno, Ms. Clark, Ms. Talay Kendrick. I would like to also thank our, our previous Board member that was at Kathleen High School is Ms. Kay Fields. I would like to thank my former principal, Mr. Jones, that provided me the opportunity at Kathleen High School. I would also like to thank the former Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Green. And I'd also like to thank my mentor for principalship, Mr. Williams. My goal is, and my goal will always be, is to serve students. And those students are here at Polk County Public Schools, and that will continue to be my goal until I retire. And we don't know what that is, that time is yet, but I would like to thank all of you. And I would like to thank the Board, and I would like to thank our Superintendent, Mr. Hyde, and I really do appreciate you coming here to Polk County Public Schools. It has definitely changed the culture here. I thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Please bring your family and friends, colleagues can come down front, take a photo, please. We can take several if we need to.
I was looking for Yumini everywhere, and I see her now in the front row. Oh my Lord, there's Pat Barnes.
Ms. Barnes, it's a pleasure to see you. I'm gonna call attention to you because you snuck in. Nice try. Next, I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Yumini Barian, Assistant Principal McGlothlin Middle School, promoted to Acting Principal at North Lakeland Elementary. And Ms. Barian used to work directly with Ms. Barnes in our turnaround schools. She's an incredible leader, great passion, great heart, so glad to see you here tonight.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Board members, Mr. Hyde, thank you as well, our leadership team, Ms. Collins, Ms. Cangelos, my other Regional, Ms. Bennett, and all the Regionals. Thank you for believing in me, for Mr. Green as well, and his absence. And so I am honored to take the helm at North Lakeland Elementary. We have a challenge ahead of us, but we are rising to the challenge. We are charting a new path, and I want to thank my, some of my team that have come here with me, even the pink hair. It's red ribbon week, okay? And so my, my family as well, my husband couldn't make it, he's working late, and my other sons are at practice, but my parents came from Jacksonville, and I thank them. And then also Ms. Barnes, my mentor when I came to Polk County as the Senior Director for School Improvement, and I also see Ms. Brinson as well. And then my right hand, Ms. Caratolo, my AP. My other left hand, he's not here, Mr. Fleming. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity. I am honored to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, hang on, don't go anywhere, because you mentioned other people that are here, so let's get in a photo. You're not gonna avoid it. Pink hair and all. You wore it. Next, we have Jennifer Blackburn, Assistant Principal at Laurel Elementary, being promoted to Acting Principal at Laurel Elementary.
I would like to start by thanking God for guiding my path. My journey actually started in Polk County in 1982. When I walked into Mrs. Decker's kindergarten classroom at Davenport Elementary, it was there that I discovered what it takes to become an exceptional educator. In that classroom, I learned the value of community and the importance of caring for one another, two lessons that have guided me throughout my career and continue to shape my leadership today. I am forever grateful for the opportunity to serve the county that helped shape who I am today. Thank you to everyone who made this possible and for believing in me.
Congratulations. Next, we have Rachel Jones, Assistant Principal at Sleepy Hill Elementary, being promoted to Acting Principal at Sleepy Hill Elementary.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I stand you before you today with a deep sense of gratitude, pride, and humility. Becoming a principal has been a dream of mine, and to see that dream come true is truly one of the greatest honors of my life, so thank you, School Board members, for this. First and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Talay Kendrick for not only believing in me but entrusting me with this incredible responsibility. Your confidence and support means more than words can express. To my family, you've been there through it all. Thank you for your love, patience, and encouragement throughout every step of my journey. You've celebrated the highs, and you've stood with me through the challenges, and I couldn't have done this without you. And to my best friend, Ashley Menentry, thank you for your endless work sessions where we laugh until we cry, but we also learn and grow from each other. You've been my rock, and I couldn't have gotten here without you, so thank you. Becoming a principal isn't just a career milestone, it's the fulfillment of a lifelong calling to lead, to inspire, and to make a difference in the lives of students, staff, and my community. I'm excited to serve with integrity, compassion, and purpose as we build a future full of possibilities together. Thank you all for this incredible opportunity and for the trust you've placed in me. I am honored, humbled, and ready to continue the work that I've started at Sleepy Hill Elementary. Thank you.
Next, we have LaChaz Cofield Harris, Assistant Principal at Chain of Lakes Elementary, being promoted to Acting Principal at Churchwell Elementary.
All right. Good afternoon. I stand before you today deeply honored to accept this leadership appointment. I am truly grateful for the trust and confidence that the Superintendent, hey, Mr. Hyde, the School Board, and the Executive Leadership and Cabinet has placed in me. I am also immensely grateful for the trust that Ms. Kendrick, when she looked across the landscape of leadership and said, "I choose you," I am very grateful for that. This appointment is not just a personal achievement, it is also a call to serve, it is a call to lead, and above all, it is a call to inspire all of my amazing stakeholders within the community of R. Clem Churchwell and beyond. Again, thank you all for this opportunity to lead and serve, and may you all have a terrific Tuesday with purpose on purpose. I bid.
Next, we have Felicia Fletcher Young, Assistant Principal at Polk Grad Academy, being promoted to Acting Principal at Polk Grad Academy, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I would like to say thank God for the blessing. Superintendent Hyde, the Board, thank you all for the opportunity to continue to serve where my passion is the most, and that's with at-risk students. Although Polk Grad is small and statue, we do a great and mighty work. And so partnering with students and their families to ensure that they're graduating, that is the most rewarding. And I, again, I would like to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. I don't see her. Would you like us to get in a second photo? If you just turn, and that way he can get in front? Thank you. Congratulations again. I see you back there, Ms. Frazier. Thank you for allowing us that momentary pause. Next, we have the Miss, the fabulous Ms. Maude Frazier, Assistant Principal at Socrum Elementary, being promoted to Acting Principal at Rochelle School of the Arts.
Hello, everyone, and thank you. Thank you, Sir Hyde, as I call him, the Board, and everyone in their respective places. When I was five years old, is this story time? Okay. When I was five years old, I knew I always wanted to be a teacher. When I was 16, I told everyone that I was going to be that teacher for the rest of my life, but I didn't know how I was going to pay for it. You see, a few years prior, I found out that I- You see, a few years prior, I found out that I had a reading deficiency that I've had since I was in kindergarten, and I wasn't going to receive many scholarships. I didn't grow up in a home that had resources to help me make it, so I joined the Army National Guard, and it was one of the best decisions of my life. Now, I did struggle in college and took the state test multiple times, but I didn't give up because I knew God had a plan for me. Who knew it would be me becoming a principal? Oh, my gosh. Thank you to Mrs. Pat Landris, who hired me as an intern at Park Elementary in Avon Park back in 2004, and Avon Park is my second home. I taught there for five years and moved to Polk County, where I met and excelled under the direction of Dr. Gwen Kessel, who's here today, and Mrs. Sybil Odom Jackson, and taught there for another 12 years, guided by others like Dr. Ruth Reimer and Dr. Myra Bonnie Richardson. One day not too long ago, Polk County and the University of South Florida gave me an opportunity to gain a master's degree in ed leadership. I jumped at the chance through, or though, it was one of the most beautiful and most saddest times of my life, but I propelled. As assistant principals at multiple schools, I've learned a lot. Moving to Horizons with Mrs. Amy Heisenmeyer gave me hope. Working with her husband, Mr. Dart Myers, gave me confidence, and working with Ms. Jana Joswiak helped me realize my true leadership capabilities. For these things and more, I thank you all. To my confidence, my mentors, my "let me run something" bias, my family who never gave up on me and listened to all of my stories throughout these years, I thank you too. I've never dreamt of anything this glorious, but I'm honored for the recognition. I know that God isn't done with me yet, and I can't wait to see what opportunities are in store for me and the babies, littles and the bigs, that I'll lead. Thank you all so much.
Can someone call Ms. Jay? She's trying to hide from me.
One more.
Sorry, I'm in the back of the line.
Next, we have Azur Gibson, Assistant Principal at Inwood Elementary, being promoted to Acting Principal at Philip O'Brien Elementary. Not with us this evening, so we'll bring them back at another meeting. Next, we have Nikki Jones, Assistant Principal at Barto Elementary Academy, being promoted to Acting Principal at Dixieland Elementary.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, Superintendent Hyde, Chairman Dr. Allen, school board members, and cabinet. I would like to thank you all as well. I am truly honored for this opportunity to serve as the principal at Dixieland Elementary. I appreciate your faith and confidence in me. I assure you, we are working, we are going to work hard, and we're going to get the job done at Dixieland. To my family, thank you for believing in me, supporting me through each step, all the steps of the way. It truly, truly takes a village. To my colleagues, my friends, my current and my past regionals, thank you for your support and your encouragement. Most importantly, to my new Dixieland family, thank you so much for welcoming me to Dixieland. And one thing I want to share that I shared with my staff this week in our weekly email, no matter the title you hold, you never know who you're going to make an impact on. Every day we wake up and have the blessing to make an impact, we are changing lives one day at a time. Again, thank you all for this incredible opportunity.
Good job. Congratulations. Come on down, family members, colleagues. Good job. Not with us this evening is Mr. Seth Lambert, Head of Program at Lake Region High School, who was promoted to Acting Principal at Fort Meade Middle Senior High School. Next, we have principal transfers. We're asking them to come to the podium if they're with us this evening. Mr. Matt Blankenship, Principal at Fort Meade Middle Senior High School, was transferred to be principal at Ridge Community High. He is not with us this evening. Lauren Juukakis, excuse me, Principal at Floral Avenue Elementary, was transferred to Principal at Eastside Elementary. She is not with us this evening. Jana Joswiak, Principal at Socrum Elementary School, was transferred to be principal at Sandhill Elementary, and she is here with us this evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you. I just want to thank the superintendent and the board, as well as Dr. Brooks, Ms. Kendrick, Dr. Ben Henry, and Mr. Green. I loved my Socrum community, but I was driving three hours a day, so now I'm eight minutes from home, and I'm driving 16 minutes a day. So, thank you, everyone. I'm riding out into the sunset soon, so I really appreciate it, and I appreciate you all.
Congratulations, Jana. Did she refuse her photo? You aren't gone yet.
She says she took her money.
All right. Next, we have Alexander McLucky, Principal Louis Anna Woodbury, now being transferred, has been transferred, to be Principal at Frostproof Middle Senior. Alex?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Superintendent Hyde and the board for allowing me the continued opportunity to serve this community. I'd like to thank all of those regionals that have helped me along the way, and all mentors that I've had that were not regionals. And I would like to thank my current staff and my community at Frostproof for making this transition a wonderful experience. Go Bulldogs!
Also not with us this evening is Christopher Miller, Principal at R. Bruce Wagner, who was transferred to be Principal at Mulberry Middle School. Next, we have Tally Miller, Principal at North Lakeland Elementary School, who was recently transferred to be Principal at Garden Grove Elementary.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Hyde and the school board for the continued opportunity to serve our students of Polk County and the community of Garden Grove. It has been a great experience so far at Garden Grove, and I have an awesome administrative team and community there to be a part of. And Mr. Roberts, thank you for your support. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, because the pink hair is not going to stand out at all in the photo. Don't tell the other principal. Congratulations, Tally. Mr. Chair, members of the board, that concludes administrative appointments this evening.
Lots of energy. All right, so we're moving down to our special recognitions, and Superintendent Hyde, would you now lead us through this section as well?
So I'm going to apologize, Mr. Chair. I do not have the text for special recognition, so I'm going to go ahead and invite Jeanette Crowley to the podium. She's here to honor and recognize those individuals who are identified as being recipients of this quarter's Focus on Excellence. Mr. Keys will be joining them.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde, school board chair, board members. The Focus on Excellence Employee Recognition Campaign launched six years ago to foster the culture of recognition and motivate staff to continually strive for excellence in their roles. By highlighting outstanding achievements and dedication, this initiative helps strengthen the morale and build a supportive environment throughout Polk County Public Schools. Keeping one of the nation's 26 largest school districts running efficiently entails all 13,000-plus employees giving their very best every day. Through the campaign, we celebrate PCPS staff from various roles, ensuring their contributions aren't overlooked in our school district. Each quarter, 12 nominated employees from different employee groups are selected as winners through a nomination process to receive prizes from our generous sponsors, attend a appreciation luncheon, and be honored at a school board meeting. The 12 winners are also featured on our website and social media channels. This allows the public and stakeholders to learn more about our amazing employees. As we enter another impactful year of the program, our goal remains the same: to encourage and appreciate employees positively impacting their lives while upholding the student's first mission. It's an honor to be here with you tonight as we recognize our administrators, professional, technical, and non-classroom teachers. I do want to give a quick shout-out to our sponsors, because without the sponsors, this program would not be possible. IDX Brands, MidFlorida Credit Union, Public Supermarkets, Inc., Sign Gypsies, Hand and Stone Massage and Facial Spa, Connect Ed Polk, Chick-fil-A, A.D. Morgan, Central Florida Development Council, Orlando Health, Dixie Southern Industrial, Inc., The Club at Eaglebrook, T-Mobile, Camp Margaritaville. Thank you to these generous sponsors and partners who provide ongoing support to our school district, not only for this campaign, but just overall, each day. Because of their in-kind and financial contributions, every PCPS employee nominated through this program, not just the winners, also receive a gift as well. All right, let's find out more about our winners. Within our principal division, I'd like to recognize Teddy Brown. So Teddy, can you come on up here, please?
Don't keep waving your finger.
So each of you have a foam finger, so I would like you to help celebrate and recognize them as they come up here. So we are the best at PCPS, this group, okay? So Mr. Brown is a principal at Lake Alfred Polytech Academy. And what Mr. Brown loves most about his job and his role in working for Polk County Public Schools is he thinks the only reason he got into this profession is because he cares about kids. And I think that's really admirable, that you're in this profession for the kids, because we want you to be here for the kids. He loves watching students grow from children to successful young adults, and knowing that he had just a little part in their success and journey. So we want to thank you, we want to congratulate you, and we're highlighting you because you are the best at PCPS. So thank you for what you do each and every day. Eric Hutchinson, please come forward. Mr. Hutchinson is an Assistant Principal at Winter Haven Senior High. What Mr. Hutchinson loves most about his job with Polk County Public Schools is the opportunity to build meaningful relationships while serving the community that he cares so deeply about. Each day, he gets to support his students and staff by fostering an environment focused on academic and professional growth. Thank you so much for what you do. Congratulations. Nadia Lewis. Ms. Lewis is a principal at James E. Stevens Academy. Ms. Lewis said, "Working for Polk County Public Schools as a principal has been one of the most rewarding experiences of her career." In this role, she is able to provide students with a safe learning environment, academically challenging curriculum, and programs that support their social, emotional needs. Being a principal allows her to foster a positive school culture where teachers and staff are excited to come to work, grow as professionals, and deliver the highest quality education for our students. Beautiful. Congratulations. Peter McDougal. Peter is the principal at Bellacita. What Mr. McDougal said is that every day he comes to work, he has an opportunity to make a lasting impact on the life of a student or staff member at Bellacita. It brings him the greatest joy to see the people around him being successful and being the best version of themselves. He loves the opportunity that Polk County Public Schools has provided for him to make Bellacita the best place to learn and work. Congratulations. Sherry Scott, Senior Director in Student Services. Ms. Scott loves the privilege of getting to support staff and administrators across the district as we work together to improve the lives of students and families. She's very lucky and grateful to have a job where she feels that she makes a difference every day. Congratulations. Lucas Wilkins, Principal at Winston Academy of Engineering. Lucas loves that he gets to celebrate student success daily while supporting teachers in their craft of teaching. Cultivating a love for learning among students is his motivation, and seeing the smiles it brings to our teachers and students when they feel success. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, alright, we do not have Mary Fisher with us tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and read her information and her school. So Mary Fisher is a food service manager at RW Blake Academy. Want to make sure, I'm looking in the crowd to make sure I didn't miss Mary. Okay. The thing that Mary loves most about her job is building a bond with the children. She loves that they are comfortable around her and get excited about sharing the things in their life with her. She loves being able to brighten a child's day when they're having a bad day. Sometimes, it only takes a simple smile or good morning to make them smile. She loves the freedom of having ownership over her position. She loves that she's able to have fun with the kids with all of the events that Polk County Public Schools puts on for the students. Congratulations to Mary Fisher. Kirk. I have Kirk Hanson. Kirk? Yep, mhm, you're good. Kirk Hanson, Digital Learning Coordinator in Instructional Business Technology. Kirk said, "As a former classroom teacher and now a digital learning coordinator with instructional technology, what he loves the most about working for Polk County Public Schools is the opportunity to continue making a meaningful impact on students of all ages." He's proud to support educators in using learning applications and facilitating district-wide staff trainings alongside some of the most dedicated colleagues on one of the most hardest-working teams in the district. Congratulations. Kelly O'Neil. Come on, Kelly. Kelly's a school nurse at Union Academy. What Kelly loves most about working for Polk County Public Schools as a nurse is being able to care for each student as a whole, not just their physical health, but their emotional and social needs too. She is blessed to work with administration, educators, and other staff who work tirelessly every day to foster an environment where students grow and develop. Congratulations.
Hang on, her parents are here. Congratulations.
Humberto Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez is Senior Coordinator of Instruction and Curriculum and Instruction. What he loves most about his job is that every day he works in conjunction with administrators, coaches, faculty, and other instructional staff to ensure that every student has the opportunity to be successful after high school. In addition, he loves how diverse his job is, and he has the privilege of supporting teachers in the classroom, creating and facilitating professional development, building standard-based lessons, dissecting and analyzing data, amongst others. Thank you for what you do. Kristin Smith, Library Media Specialist at Chain of Lakes Elementary. Kristin loves her job as media specialist because she gets to connect with all the students at her school. Each day, she gets to have discussions with her students about their interests, what they're reading, and more. The best part about working for Polk County Public Schools is having supportive colleagues and administration. We appreciate you. Susan Stewart. Susan is a Teacher Resource Specialist at East Area Adult. What she loves most about her job is seeing our students achieve their dream of earning a high school diploma. It's inspiring to watch their confidence grow as they overcome challenges and reach their goals. She also finds great joy in helping our English-language learners gain the skills they need to communicate and succeed in their new community. Congratulations.
I feel like I have to explain now to the whole world why I'm not leaving.
Congratulations to each of our winners. In the coming weeks, Polk County Public Schools will be spotlighting you on our social media channels as we continue to put the focus on you. In closing, I want to empower all of us just to continue being amazing leaders, pay it forward, and nominate additional PCPS employees during the school year. The nomination window for our second group is currently open and will close on November 3rd. We'll be recognizing employees within the positions of transportation, school nutrition, and paraeducators. That concludes my presentation. Are all of our winners here?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
We already have the group photo from the event. Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Beth Nave, Regional Assistant Superintendent, who's here to make some special announcements about our finalists and the selection of our principal and Assistant Principal of the Year.
Good evening Chairman Allen, Honorable Board Members, and Superintendent Hyde. On behalf of the Division of Schools, Chief of Schools Tracy Collins, and the Regional Assistant Superintendents, it is our privilege to recognize the Principals and Assistant Principals of the Year from each region. Following the regional recognitions, Superintendent Hyde will announce the overall district winners for Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. Each Regional Assistant Superintendent selected a leader based on student achievement, school climate, and culture, and their demonstration and support of district initiatives as instructional leaders. Finalists were announced before their peers during the September Principal and Assistant Principal meetings. As part of the selection process, finalists completed a written assignment responding to two essay questions focused on school data and culture. These submissions were carefully reviewed, and one finalist from each group was recommended to Mrs. Collins and Superintendent Hyde for final approval. The district winners will go on to represent Polk County Public Schools in the Florida Department of Education's Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year recognitions. It is a true honor to publicly celebrate these exceptional and dedicated leaders and to announce our winners. Polk County Public Schools is proud to have each of you leading and representing this remarkable profession. We would also like to thank Mr. Jason Geary and his team for creating our banners. And our winners will also be recognized and have the opportunity to speak at the Inspire Awards on November 7th. So at this time, we will begin with our Assistant Principals. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your trophy and your Best of PCPS Challenge coin, and remain standing up front. Representing the Northwest Region, Leandra Sessions, Lake Gibson Middle. From the Northeast Region, Rebecca Pierce, from Lake Marion Creek Middle. From the Central Region, Jessica Gavin, from Gardengrove Elementary. From the South Region, Ms. Jennifer Martinez, from Lakeland Highlands Middle. From the High School Region, Ms. Nikki Jordan, from Winter Haven High School. And from our Transformation Region, Ms. Megan Long, from Kathleen Elementary. Mr. Hyde, at this time, will you please announce the winner for the Assistant Principal of the Year?
It would be my pleasure. At this time, it's my pleasure to announce that our winner for Assistant Principal of the Year is Ms. Leandra Sessions from Lake Gibson Middle School.
Ms. Sessions is part of the fabric of Lake Gibson Middle. She spent years working as a math teacher and coach before rising to Assistant Principal in 2019, and that kind of experience has definitely paid off. In the wake of the COVID pandemic, Lake Gibson students were struggling to get back on track. Ms. Sessions began leading weekly professional development sessions with the school's math and science teachers, which led to new strategies in the classroom that got results. She also brought back after-school tutoring sessions and even arranged transportation so students could get much-needed extra help. Lake Gibson is steadily making progress towards a B grade. Over the years, Ms. Sessions has also been instrumental in developing successful efforts to increase student engagement, improve attendance, and increase positive behaviors. Lastly, she says it's important that everyone feels seen and valued, receives praise, and knows that they are capable of success regardless of their background. Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Alright, now we get to hear about our principal finalist of the year. From the Northwest Region, Lucas Wilkins, from Winston Academy of Engineering. From the Northeast Region, Ms. Cindy Brayton, from Davenport School of the Arts. From the Central Region, Michael Sears, from Jewett School of the Arts. From the South Region, Ms. Michelle Townley, Willow Oak School. However, she's not able to be here due to a family and staff event on her campus tonight, but we thank her. From our High Schools Region, Ryan Van, Lake Gibson High.
This is a tough one.
From our Transformation Schools, Ms. Rhonda Cotter, from Westwood Middle. Alright, at this time, Mr. Hyde, will you please announce the winner for the Principal of the Year?
It is my pleasure, but people don't realize how competitive our school board members are when it comes to things like this. So I've had to hide the names the entire night from Ms. Miller, who keeps trying to look over here to see if it's one of her principals. But it's my pleasure. This is a great group, by the way, so is our Assistant Principal group. What amazing leaders, so you should take a lot of pride in the fact that you were nominated and you were finalists. So at this time, though, we have to have one final name, one final person selected, and that is Ms. Rhonda Cotter.
In the summer of 2023, she was presented with an opportunity to lead Westwood Middle, as she set her sights on raising student academic performance. By the end of the 23-24 school year, Westwood had improved to a C grade, with students seeing gains in nearly every academic category. Last year, the school fell just one point short of a B grade. Ms. Cotter works hard to build a positive school culture and listen to the needs of her staff, and has made significant difference in the recruitment and retention efforts there. She's also placed an emphasis on student experiences at Westwood. By implementing new incentives and events that encourage positive behaviors, student attendance has climbed and suspensions are significantly down. She explains Westwood's approach. "We are building a school culture that celebrates effort, encourages growth, and creates a joy in learning." Congratulations, Ms. Cotter.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Did Miller step out? Did Lisa step out? Did Lisa step out? We're on pause. You don't have Ms. Miller. You don't have a quorum.
Dr. Allen, now's your chance to tell a few more jokes. We have an amazing presentation. We're thrilled to have Polk Education Foundation's Ms. Tracy Porter, Senior Director, with us this evening, as well as several of her executive board members.
And one of my co-
And one of my fellow colleague board members, Mr. Matt Mucci, who's here on behalf of AT&amp;T for a special presentation. Ms. Porter.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. I'm going to immediately turn it over to our Vice Chair of the Foundation, Jillian Smith, to do the presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. Good afternoon, school board members, Superintendent Hyde, distinguished guests. I'm honored to be here, representing the Polk Education Foundation Board. Polk County is fortunate to have so many individuals, organizations, and businesses who care passionately about education and its power to transform lives and transform our community. The time, talent, and resources invested in student success undoubtedly make a difference, and Polk Education Foundation is proud to be a contributor to this student success. Today, we are here to recognize the valuable contributions of Matt Mucci and his employer, AT&amp;T. Through Matt's service and generosity, countless lives have been uplifted. Matt serves in leadership roles in several nonprofits countywide, and we are lucky that he is going into his ninth year serving on our foundation board, now at the helm as the Board Chair. Of note, this past year, he has been a rock for the organization, playing a very important role in the transition with the retirement of longtime Foundation Executive Director, Susan Copeland, the selection of Tracy Porter as her successor, Susan's passing, and crossing the million-dollar threshold of awarding more than $1 million in scholarships this past year, and unveiling a new logo that complements the district's logo and represents PCPS, PEF, and the community coming together to support students, teachers, and schools, the heart of our organization. AT&amp;T's mission is to connect people to greater possibilities through innovative technology and exceptional service, enabling them to thrive in a digital world. They have definitely achieved that mission here in Polk County. Their generosity has connected students to greater possibilities through their contributions over the years that total more than $140,000 to Polk County Public Schools. Today, we are here to recognize AT&amp;T's recent contribution to the Polk Education Foundation of $30,000 that will allow us to help bridge the digital divide through gifting computers and digital literacy courses to graduating seniors in need as they pursue their higher education. Matt, I truly admire your servant leader heart. Thank you, thank you for all you have done to make Polk County a great place to live, work, play, and learn. We're extremely grateful to both you and AT&amp;T. I'd like to call you up to present this beautiful big check.
You know, it really warms my heart that the district and the foundation continue to work together, and that is not possible without leadership, and that comes from Superintendent Hyde, it comes from this board, and it comes from Polk Education Foundation, this leadership team, our board, and all of our volunteers, all of our board members. So thank you all for continuing to work together. At AT&amp;T, over the past several years, we've made it a priority to, as Jillian said, connect the digital divide. And what that really means is, is that there are plenty of students all over our county, all over our state, all over our country, who don't have access to the internet because of where they live, and that is just unacceptable. So AT&amp;T has made it a priority to not only expand our network, but to enhance our network. And so now that we've done that, especially here in Polk County and our rural areas, but now we need to equip those students with the tools that they need to further succeed. So it is my honor to present this check for $30,000 to Polk Education Foundation and Tracy Porter.
If I could, real quick, I just want to make a comment as serving as a board representative on Polk Education Foundation and to comment on Matt and his leadership. I've only been there a short while. You always have something insightful to say, you lead with conviction and courage, you always, it seems like, add to the meeting. And so thank you for your service. As someone that lives and operates in the corporate world, thank you to AT&amp;T, because I know that they have to sacrifice you to be able to serve as well. So thank you so much. This is a big deal. So thank you for your continued commitment. Nine years, nine years is a long time, and we appreciate you, and I just wanted you to know that. Thank you, sir.
Indeed. All right. Thank you, Mr. Keys. So, you know, if we look around today, we've seen a lot of kids, a lot of students in our boardroom, and then from there, we've seen a lot of families. We've honored families tonight in a big way, and then a bunch of leaders. And that's pretty impressive, and that's what we envision for our students as well. So great leaders amongst us, for sure. Board members, we are now moving down to our public comment section. Typically, we have three opportunities to bring comments before the board. The first one is for items on the agenda. Secondly, during our public hearing, and we do have a public hearing tonight. And then, thirdly, towards the end of the meeting. So currently, we do not have any cards for agenda item. So board members, we're going to now move down on our agenda to the approval of our minutes. We need to approve three sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the September 23, 2025 work session meeting. The chair will now entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes as written.
So move.
All right. So Mr. Keys has made the motion, and Ms. Fields has seconded it. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now moving to the second set of minutes, and that's for the September 30, 2025 special board meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes as written. Ms. Fields has made the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Keys has seconded it. Any discussion, board members? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote at this time. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now down to the third set of minutes, and that's for the October 14, 2025 work session meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So move.
Mr. Keys made the motion, and Ms. Fields has seconded it. Any discussion, board members, on that third set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote at this time. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. The next item is approval of today's consent agenda. The chair will now entertain a motion to accept the October 28 consent agenda as printed.
So move.
All right. So Ms. Fields has made the motion.
Second.
And Ms. Miller has seconded it. Any discussion on our consent agenda? That's before you, board members. All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now down to our action agenda for tonight, and that starts with U1 entitled "School Improvement Plans." The purpose of the school improvement plan is to document goals, strategies, and action steps that aim to improve the quality of education students receive. The suggested action is to approve school improvement plans. So the chair will now entertain a motion on this item.
So move.
All right. Ms. Fields has made the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Keys has seconded it. Any discussion on U1? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are down to U2 entitled "2026 Head Start Continuation Grant." And the Head Start Admin Grant application for the fiscal year of 2026 is funded by the Agency for Children and Families via the Office of Head Start and is funded to serve 942 children in the district. So the suggested action is to improve the apply-for-the-head-start continuation grant for the upcoming year. I'll take a motion.
So move.
All right. Mr. Keys has made a motion, and Ms. Miller has seconded it. Any discussion, board members, on this significant grant that serves a great portion of our students? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are down to U3 entitled "The Schools of McHale Academy Charter Renewal." This came before the board during the September 23 work session. The suggested action is to approve the Schools of McHale Academy charter renewal for 15 years. The chair will now entertain a motion for this item.
So move.
Mr. Keys has made the motion, and Ms. Fields has seconded it. Any discussion on this one? Thank you, Ms. Miller. You are recognized.
I just want to remind the public, there's lots of conversation in our work session for these items, and today, the head of McHale Academy was here to talk about this, and I want to thank him again for his words of collaboration and working with families in the community. So I look forward to seeing the opening of this school as it's remodeled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any other items for discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on this. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are down to U4 entitled "PCPS 2026 Legislative Platform." The suggested action is to approve the legislative platform for this year. The chair will now accept the motion on this one.
So move.
All right. Ms. Miller has made the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Keys has seconded it. Any discussion? Ms. Miller, you are recognized.
Just want to, again, thank the staff who spent time to help update this. I'm looking forward to the retreat over the summer so we can have some written procedures to make sure that we have this ready in time for next session and talk about what all we can include. But I appreciate the quick amendment made so we can get it passed and on our way to Tallahassee with a platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And Ms. Fields, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was just going to suggest that we read it into the record, what the change is.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Do you have it up?
I do. I have it here. The amendments were under the Funding Section 2. We broke out the categories a bit, but it reads this way: "Support FLDOE recommended increases in mental health and transportation categoricals." And then, number 3, we are asking to support an increase in the ESE guaranteed categorical to meet the increasing needs of ESE students and the demands of IDEA. Along with that, we struck number 5 as an appropriation element to strike it from the funding, but to roll it into the appropriation. Those were the amendments that were brought before us during work session today.
Thank you for reading that.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Ms. Fields, for drawing attention to that. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll call for a vote now at this time. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are down to U5 entitled "Top Two Plans Updated." This came before us earlier today as a Step 2 with the updated revisions. So the chair will now entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
Ms. Fields has made the motion on this item. I need a second.
Second.
All right. Tie goes Ms. Miller. Any discussion, board members, on U5? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote at this time. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Next, we will now go into our public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. The first order of business is any comments on public hearing agenda items. We have not received any comment cards on the public hearing items tonight. We do have two items to bring before you, board members. The first one is V1. This is the Public Hearing for Policy Updates. This item came before us during the previous work session and a previous public hearing on September 9, I believe. We can vote on all of the listed policies through one single motion unless a board member wishes to call for an individual vote on a specific policy. In that case, the individual policy can then be removed and placed as a separate action item. So the board may also choose to retain a specific policy for action at a future board meeting. At this time, I would like to read, for the record, the policy number and names presented. All right. So the list that's before you, as far as policies, would be Bylaw 0100 Definitions, Bylaw 0124 Standards of Ethical Conduct, Bylaw 131 Legislative and Policymaking, Bylaw 0131.1 Technical Corrections, Bylaw 0143.1, and that's Residence Areas, Bylaw 0164 Notice of Meetings, Bylaw 0165 Meetings, Bylaw 0165.2 Regular Meetings, and then Bylaw 0165.3 Special and Emergency Meetings. And then lastly, Bylaw 0166 Exempt Meetings. Again, we've gone through work session and public hearing on these items. Board members, I'll take a recommended motion on these policies.
Motion to approve the policy updates in their entirety as read.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keys. We got the motion and a second by Ms. Miller. Any discussion on these policies? Seeing none, board members, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next up is the Comprehensive High School Rezoning. This is our first reading on this. No action is actually required by the board at this time. You'll see that this will come back to us on the November 18 meeting. I would like to give the superintendent an opportunity to address this one and update us on where we're at with that. Superintendent, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, there were some amendments to the zoning boundaries. So, for example, for Winter Haven and Lake Region high schools, the boundary that was initially proposed was modified based off feedback and concerns about proximity to a school. So the southern edge of Lake Lulu, south, it's essentially on the map, if you go back and look at your original maps, it's a peninsula. Those are being rezoned to Lake Region. That puts them all within the two-mile radius of the school. It makes a lot more sense, and we're only talking about a total of about 47 to 53 students, depending on matriculation. So does a great deal to balance out both schools and their zones and boundaries. So that's the only update there. Mr. Chair, you had requested specifically some data regarding Lakeland High School in particular and the influx of students they may see each year over those subsequent years as students opt to go ahead and attend there, and as students who are currently attending there may opt to remain there. We'll provide those numbers to the board within the next 24 hours.
Okay.
Before the board votes on this.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, any other discussion on this item before we move on? It has been a rigorous process, very thorough, and I really appreciate the access that's been afforded to our community to speak on this, and we will continue to listen as we head towards our November 18 voting meeting. All right. I will now close out the public hearing, and we'll move back to our regular meeting. Superintendent, you are next on the agenda.
Yes, sir. So Superintendent's report, I got a few items I want to make sure we highlight. I want to congratulate all of the participants and the amazing staff, including Ms. Cummings, for last Friday's All-County Chorus Event. If you were unable to attend, you really missed a fabulous event, and there were moments where our students were where our students were performing that you just got goosebumps. It's just amazing the talent our kids have. And our guest, Cory, our, um, our guest that came in and led the high school chorus did an amazing job, truly inspirational. You could tell he connected with our kids. A hundred and ten students, I believe, from various high schools, including some of our private parochial schools, were all in attendance and participated. But I, I will tell you, for me in particular, and I, it's like picking your favorite kid. Um, I will tell you that there were two young men who sang solos from Harris, Harrison School of the Arts that were just absolutely amazing. Um, and they got a standing ovation. So, kudos to Beth and the amount, amazing team that they put together. They did some pretty special things throughout the night, including audience participation. So, really special. Um, so if you get a chance, do not miss out on the Marching Band MPA, which is coming this Saturday, November first, at Denison Stadium. Also want to remind everybody that next Friday, November seventh, is the Inspire Awards. Very excited to be hosting that event again, um, and to be able to recognize and honor our Teacher of the Year, Educator, and our Support Staff of the Year. But as you know, there's a special recognition that we've added this year, the Susan Copeland Award. Um, we made that application available to everyone. There were a total of sixteen submissions. Top four finalists were selected. We have some special recognition for them, but they will each receive a five-hundred-dollar award, um, donated by a, by an anonymous sponsor each year for the next several years. And, and it's really called the Susan Copeland Community Service Award. So the application itself asked them to focus on what do you do within your community, um, to extend beyond the classroom, beyond the school doors. So I want to commend them. Also want to congratulate our 3DE classes. We've been hosting and attending, all of you have been attending as well, our 3DE events at both Tennerock High School and at Lake Region High Schools. Uh, last week, um, in particular, um, at Lake Region, very impressed by the students who presented on a, the case study that we actually had for them was one of that Polk County Public Schools sponsored, and it asked them how do we help increase student participation or enrollment at Travis and Ridge? And they came up with some pretty exceptional responses and several takeaways that we had that now we're actually going to implement and then we're going to go back to the school and celebrate that with them because they came based off, off their feedback. The next case studies that are being addressed this week, um, and each of you should have an invite for the remainder of the week. I think we have at least two more this week at Tennerock and, and Lake Region. This is the Publix Case Study. So, the whole point behind 3DE is students and, and private sponsors each pay to have a problem that they're dealing with get addressed by our students. So it's the mini version of Shark Tank basically is the best way to describe it for the general public and the kids do a fabulous job. Um, one of the things, I pointed this out to Mr. Keys because he was at, uh, an event with me recently when we had a student presenting and there was a young lady who absolutely became, she actually was the dominant speaker amongst her group, um, because, you know, students get shy when they stand up in front of their peers in particular, but this young lady was definitely the dominant voice in the room. And I explained to him, you have to understand where she came from. Last year, she had such fear to present that she started to lose her breath. We had to give her some assistance and this year she stood up there with such courage and conviction and she was able to do that and, and we took the time to congratulate her because that kind of growth is exactly what we want for our students. So, very impressed by them. Lastly, um, had the opportunity this Saturday to attend several events. Uh, we had the fortieth anniversary for the Red Ribbon Run. I want to say thanks to all of our schools and their teams and PTOs, PTAs, and parents who brought their kids out. That's a fun activity. Um, great, again, we all, always see Mid-Florida Credit Union at all these events as well. Thanks to the, uh, Polk County Sheriff's Office and Publix for sponsoring the event, but it's, it's an honor to be there for their fortieth anniversary. And then this year was the first year, I think the inaugural year, um, of the Wingtoberfest. So I got to judge that. Any of you are welcome to do that next year. Trying to judge and, and eat thirty wings is not, it's a difficult task, even for a big guy like me. So, you're welcome to attend in my stead next year, but it was a lot of fun, great fundraiser. Uh, thank you to Tracy and the amazing team, um, who really are there to raise funds to support our most fragile kids within the community. Um, so thank you to that and that's, that's my, a summary of, of activities and, and things that I want, commendations I wanted to provide. Last thing I have is the Superintendent's Official Report. The next work session, work session and Board meeting will be held on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The work session will begin at twelve-thirty PM and the Board meeting will begin at five PM. The meetings will be held at the District Office located nineteen-fifteen South Floral Avenue here in Bartow. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, we are going to now move to our Attorney's Report. Mr. Green, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, uh, two items this evening. The first is to request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five during the regularly scheduled Board meeting for policy updates presented during three different sessions, September twenty-third, October fourteenth, and October twenty-eighth, School Board Work Sessions for Rule Development. The text of all the proposed rules scheduled for the public hearing will be available at the time the notice is published. Uh, at this time, I'd like to run through, uh, the policy numbers, um, that, uh, were previously presented. So, uh, the policies presented at September twenty-third work session, I'll give the number and the title. So sixty-one-ten Grant Funds, sixty-one-eleven Internal Controls, sixty-one-twelve Cash Management of Grants, sixty-one-fourteen Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds, sixty-two-thirty-four Use of Discretionary Lottery Funds, sixty-three-twenty-five Procurement Federal Grants Funds, seventy-two-forty Site Acquisition, seventy-three-ten Disposition of Surplus Property, seventy-four-fifty Property Inventory, seventy-five-forty dot zero-two Web Content Apps and Services, seventy-five-forty-four Use of Social Media. The policy is presented at the October fourteenth work session. Policy eighty-four-zero-five School Safety and Security, eighty-four-zero-six Reports of Suspicious Activity and Potential Threats to Schools, eighty-four-zero-seven Save School Officers, eighty-four-twenty Emergency Management, Emergency Preparedness and Emergency Response Agencies, eighty-four-thirty-one Preparedness for Toxic Hazard and Asbestos Hazard, Tac, Toxic Hazards, eighty-four-fifty-two Automatic External Defibrillators, eighty-four-sixty-two Student Abuse, Abandonment and Neglect, eighty-four-seventy Community Notification of Registered Sexual Predators, Sex Offenders, eighty-four-seventy-five Criminal Background Screening for Contractor Access, eighty-five-hundred School Nutrition Program, eighty-five-thirty-one Free and Reduced Price Meals, eighty-five-forty Vending Machines, eighty-five-fifty Competitive Food Sales, ninety-one-forty Citizens Advisory Committees, ninety-two-hundred Volunteers, ninety-eight-hundred Charter Schools. Last but not least, the policy presented at the October twenty-eighth work session this evening, I'm sorry, this morning, um, twenty-one-twenty School Improvement, twenty-one-twenty-five School Advisory Councils for School Improvement and Accountability, twenty-one-twenty-eight District Advisory Council, twenty-two-sixty Non-Discrimination Equity and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity, twenty-two-eighty Physical Education, twenty-three-forty Field and Other District Sponsored Trips, twenty-four-ten School Health Services, twenty-four-seventeen Comprehensive Health Education, twenty-four-twenty-one Career and Technical Education, twenty-four-twenty-three School-to-Work Program, twenty-four-thirty-dot-zero-one Community Volunteers, twenty-four-thirty-one Inner Scholastic Athletics, twenty-four-thirty-one-dot-zero-six Name, Image and Likeness in Athletics, twenty-four-fifty-five Dropout Prevention and Academic Intervention Programs, twenty-eight-hundred Educational Services for Students in Department of Juvenile Justice Education Programs, fifty-one-thirty-six Wireless Communication Devices, fifty-two-hundred Attendance, fifty-two-twenty-three Absences for Religious Instruction, fifty-four-ten-dot-zero-one Promotion Acceleration Placement and Retention, fifty-four-sixty Graduation Requirements, fifty-four-sixty-three Credits from Other Schools, fifty-five-hundred Student Conduct, fifty-five-fourteen Use of Bicycles, fifty-six-hundred Student Discipline, fifty-seven-eighty Student Parent Rights. And last but not least, six-six-six-one Instructional Materials Allocation.
All right. Uh, Board members, y'all have been busy. There's a lot of policies, um, that we've read and evaluates, evaluated. You've heard the recommended motion by our attorney. Uh, the Chair welcomes a motion now.
So moved.
All right. Ms. Fields has made the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Keys has seconded it. Any discussion on those policies? And the authority to advertise? All right. I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Green, you are recognized.
Thank you. My second report, it won't be as verbose as the first. Uh, the second is a request for consideration of the revised and updated agreement for Assistant School Board Attorney and General Legal Services for an increase in the hourly rate of the contracted Assistant School Board Attorney from one-hundred-fifty dollars per hour to two-hundred dollars per hour. Attached is the, in the materials, is the current agreement approved by the Board on February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. So, as a bit of background, um, the firm of Boswell and Dunlap has served as the Assistant School Board Attorney when the General Counsel is unable to serve in whatever capacity. Since two thousand and thirteen, they've been billing at the rate of one-hundred-fifty dollars. When Mr. Bridges retired, uh, there was an interim, uh, agreement, a CSA, and they were billing at the two-hundred-dollar rate. So the purpose of this agreement is for this specific Assistant School Board Attorney matters where I'll be out. Um, they, this agreement covers that period at that same rate.
Okay. All right. The Chair welcomes a motion, uh, at this time.
So moved.
Mr. Keys has made the motion and Ms. Fields has seconded it. Any discussion, Board members, on this item? And this revision and update? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Green. Next up on our agenda is the Auditor's Report. Uh, we do not have an audit report tonight, however, since our last meeting, uh, you've received the Mulberry High School Financial Review Follow-Up, the Extended Contract Hours Review, and the Annual Purchasing Card Audit. Uh, if you have any questions or follow-up, um, connect with the Superintendent or our auditor. Uh, we are now moving on to Board Member, uh, Members' Report. And I think I'll go in numeric order, so that's going to start with Mr. Keys. You are recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Very productive month, uh, various things going on in the, in the community enjoyed with Mrs. Miller attending the new teacher, um, reception, uh, well-attended and it's, uh, exciting to see the energy of all the teachers, not only new teachers, but come, teachers coming into our district and their excitement to, um, serve the students and focus on student achievement. Um, also, as Mr. Hyde, our Superintendent Hyde, shared earlier, attended the 3D Culminating Event at Lake Region and, and to see those students get up on stage and present in front of their peers, it wasn't only just the classes, the 3DE, the other students presenting, but almost, a large portion of that grade level were in there. Um, and, and to see the difference in how they've come along and they're speaking and to have that courage to stand up there, that was, uh, truly remarkable. And then I think it is a special, and it's been to many of those events before, seeing a case study that is a issue that's Polk County Public Schools is having and to see the students address that was, was special. Um, then also attended the, uh, Fall Production at Harrison School of the Arts, Kiss Me Kate. Absolutely fabulous job by the students there. Always enjoy attending those plays and it was, um, quite the performance, um, long performance. My youngest one was with us, both of my daughters, and, uh, she made it through about the first fifteen minutes, but, uh, but we had a fabulous time there and attended that. And then, uh, finally, the Polk Education Foundation Quarterly Meeting. Just, uh, really, um, enjoy the opportunity to serve in that capacity and the amazing work that we're doing with Polk Education Foundation, supporting both the students and, um, the educators in our district. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Moving to District Five, Ms. Fields, you're recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Just have a couple of things. Um, I think all of us had an opportunity to participate in Price Patrol and, uh, District Five was, I think, next to the last to, uh, celebrate and recognize, um, the finalists for the two categories of the Teacher of the Year and the School-Related Employee of the Year. And I, I just want to read the bio of both of them. The finalist for the Teacher of the Year hails from Rochelle School of the Arts and she is the School Counselor. Her name is Dr. Hyba, I think I got that right. And she brings a sharp mind and wealth of knowledge to her role as Counselor for Rochelle School of the Arts. She's a published researcher who always looks for the best methods to make sure that the students feel safe and help them succeed. She has a gift for connecting with students and parents regularly seek out her guidance. Her expertise with student behavior and academic performance has added to the positive culture at Rochelle School of the Arts. Beyond her work as a counselor, she plays a critical role in school-wide testing coordination, assists with parent-teacher conferences, and is a regular presence on lunch duty. Fluent in Arabic, she uses her language skills to improve communication and advocacy for speaking families in our district. More importantly, she makes students and families feel heard and valued. And the Rochelle staff say that she is a passionate counselor and trusted leader, making her a true gem for the school. And then the related, School-Related Employee of the Year for District Five finalist is Angelica Ortiz. She's the School Nutrition Manager for Winston Academy of Engineering. And the description of her work there is amazing. They said that you might think that she is the captain of the cafeteria at Winston Academy. As School Nutrition Manager, she is regarded for her leadership and training abilities, which have helped to provide highly qualified staff for Winston and many other Polk County Public Schools. She also has a knack for efficiency, taking steps to, to make sure that meal preparation and service is a hundred percent while reducing food waste. In addition, she always takes time to communicate with families about meal options and dietary restrictions so they know their child's health is their priority. I think one of the things that most impressed me is when she was introduced, her comment was that she wants to make sure that no child goes unfed and that it excites her to know that when they leave the cafeteria that they are happy inside and out. So, uh, and she's very well respected by her, her peers. So, as Superintendent Hyde said a few minutes ago, we will find out, uh, who is going to be the Teacher of the Year and the School-Related Employee of the Year next Saturday. So that's exciting. Uh, in addition to that, I was able to, uh, go to the, uh, groundbreaking for the gym at Southwest Middle along with Superintendent Hyde and some of the staff. And, uh, we had quite a few people from the, uh, legislative, uh, body that was there and City Commissioner.
Lakeland Highlands.
Lakeland Highlands. What did I say?
Southwest.
Okay. All right, I'm giving Southwest another one? Okay. Excuse me, I don't know why I have Southwest on my mind today. Okay, Lakeland Highlands. Uh, but we had a chance to do that last week and it was a great, uh, event and a great opportunity and the kids and the staff, uh, are very excited and they had their jazz band that played and they were amazing. They were awesome and I think they need to engage themselves in some, uh, activities in the community. They can make some, some dollars, I would say. They're just that good. And then the last thing is that we, uh, I think many of us, uh, some of us rather, met with the Divine Nine Group, uh, in, uh, in this, uh, this, this past month and, uh, I was very impressed with the representation and they just want to learn more about what we're doing, uh, as a school district, as a board, and, uh, want to find ways that they can, uh, join and become partners with us. So I'm, I'm excited about what's going to happen as it relates to that group, so, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Thank you.
And Ms. Miller is now up. You are recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Um, I'll be quick. I appreciate that we have a lot of guests this evening and this has been a very long meeting, um, but we like to celebrate our staff and all the amazing things they do. We had, um, a presentation at Lakeland High School with the Tax Collector, Joe Tutter, and the winner of the first but annual Kids Tag Art that involves a new piece of art going on your tax bill. So when you get your tax bill, you'll have a piece of art from Hope Hallic. Hope won a twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship, um, the name of her piece was Between Bite and Bait, so it's a great piece you'll see on your envelope, um, when you get it. your envelope when you get it. The teacher, Ms. Jones of Lakeland High School, also won $500 that day, so it was a day to celebrate art in our community again. And I want to say congratulations to the FFA float and all the FFA kids from Auburndale High School. We had our Bloodhound Bash, which is an old-school parade from the high school down to the park, and the kids, and the kids get to decorate a float, and this year, the FFA really showed up and did a great job on Rio, which was their theme of the birds and all the things you would find. So, congratulations to them, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller. I've got just a couple of items here as well. I just want to say thanks to Ms. Fields for stepping in for the Lakeland Highlands Middle School Gymnasium, ribbon-cutting Principal Monticelli and their staff and students. They're extremely excited about their new gymnasium. Pretty exciting time for sure within Lakeland. Want to say congrats to District One Inspire Awards finalist at George Jenkins. That would be, listen to this name, Rad Bolt. I mean, what a name, Rad Bolt, who leads their band there at George Jenkins, incredible job that he's doing, and you can just sense his passion and his energy, and that's just, and really, a very strong disciplinary as it relates to leading their band. An incredible band there at George Jenkins. And then Ms. Cordero, who's the ESOL Para-Educator at Crystal Lake Elementary, and as noted, we're just looking forward to celebrating the overall winners on November 7th at the RP Funding Center. So, hopefully you all make it out there. I wanted to say, yeah, thanks to Joe Tetter, our Tax Collector, for another initiative in supporting the arts in Polk County. They launched the Kids Tax Art, as Ms. Miller mentioned. What stood out to me, well, first of all, Hope Hallic did a phenomenal job in speaking about her work as an artist and the technique that she put into it and the handwork, and then scanning it and digitizing it and just doing some mixed media work around her work and talking about the meaning of it was pretty incredible. Yes, she, her work is being distributed to 400,000 households around Polk County, which is incredible. So, I was looking at the statistics on art museums around the United States and what their annual, some of our top art museums and their annual visitors and that data. Like, her art in this one mailing's gonna be comparable to an annual visitor base of some of our best museums in the United States, which is pretty incredible. And then lastly, I want to say thanks to President Martin and Provost Tetter at Florida Southern College and their initiative in joining hands with us and starting the teacher academy at Lakeland High School. It's a pretty incredible opportunity to train the future educators. Florida Southern's been a great place to train so many of our educators. I reflect back and know that my great-grandmother, who spent 30 years as a Polk County educator, received her graduate degree from Florida Southern years and years ago, and Florida Southern's been a mainstay within our community in training educators. And the fact that their brand is now present on our campus, and these students can earn at least, or almost up to five college courses during their time at Lakeland High is pretty phenomenal, pretty exciting time for that new initiative there. So, that's all I have tonight, and we will now transition to our public comments. So, the next item on our agenda is public comments, addressing items not on our agenda tonight. As noted earlier, to register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no media action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in accordance with the school board policy. So, I have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak. So, could you please come forward when I call your name? State your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. First off, off, we have Jenny Stafford and then Catherine Jackson. So, there is a red line there for Kathleen Jackson.
So, can you see, she's gonna be signing here, is this okay?
All right. Ms. Stafford, you are recognized. Yep?
Can you set the position? Can she have that table? Or this one? Can we move this around? There we go. Thank you. I'm gonna sign, is that okay?
You are recognized, yes.
So, I just want to share a little bit of a Bible verse from Leviticus 19:14 from you, for you. Do not insult the deaf or cause the blind to stumble. You must fear God, for I am the Lord. I am profoundly deaf myself. I've received my education here in Polk County since I was two. At 17, I was in the third cluster of deaf schools in OJP, Southwest Junior High, and Lakeland High School. My transportation on Polk County school bus was each morning was one hour twice a day. When I was six and I was in first grade, I had an ASL interpreter with me. I was mainstreamed and continued all the way to my senior year, and then I was a co-captain of the swim team. Okay. Okay. And I graduated from Lakeland High School. It was, I appreciated the wonderful support that I was given, and all my needs were here in Polk County and for providing, I was, had a note-taker, the deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher. I had no conflict with anything. I was able to go to college for deaf education. I had ASL students. I graduated and became a teacher, and I taught ASL and hearings, ASL hearing students. I succeeded in school because I worked hard on my academics, and I had some support of sign language interpreters and the deaf and hard-of-hearing teachers who taught me how to reach my goals and attend college. In high school, I overcame those obstacles that some general education teachers did not believe that I could pass in their honor classes, and that's the truth. How I did become successful, how did I become successful as a deaf adult? I became independent and learned how to advocate for my rights. I applied for jobs on my own. Except for my maternity leave and for one, for a one-three-month period, I have always been employed, and I have never applied for SSI or SSDI to support myself, and I can do anything that a hearing person can do except hear. At this moment, I recall a Bible verse that I've shared. Each child in Polk County deserves to be heard, no matter how qualified their signing skills are. The heart to give to express from now for this year, for 2025, please provide an improved and appropriate resources and services to each deaf and hard-of-hearing student in Polk County with improved technology and resources for deaf awareness that I did not have when I was a child here in Polk County. The school board has taken away...
Thank you, Ms. Stafford. Thank you. So, Kathleen Jackson is up next, and then Diana Cobble. Diana Cobble.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Sturwirth Jackson, and I am your proverbial deaf education expert. When the new administration came on board, a question was posed to employees and the community at large. That question was, what does a 21st-century Polk County graduate look like? When I heard this question, I immediately thought, what you're really asking is, what does resiliency look like? I'm an action researcher by trade, so in looking at resiliency research through a deaf lens, Dr. Peter Hauser states that the characteristics of resiliency are actually major components of a person's basic human health. So, my question to the board and the community is, are deaf and hard-of-hearing children graduating from Polk County resilient? Do they represent that 21st-century graduate that we all envision? I came to Polk after 25 years at the national and state levels to get back into the classroom to do the real work of teaching. After my eight-year tenure at Lakeland High School and working diligently with the DHH Classroom Assessments, the data is clear. Polk County is not growing and graduating resilient deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and that's not because the potential is not there, and it's definitely not because there's any perceived disability. The current framework being applied to the education of deaf children in this district is disproportionately flawed, and it does not align with best practices in educating deaf children. We find these truths evident in pathological views of deafness, outdated educational practices, and blatant disregard for valuing deaf children in their community. Therefore, I call upon the school board to open a complete investigation on the practices being applied in the deaf education department and the decisions being made. Decisions that are further disabling deaf and hard-of-hearing children, and those decisions that are preventing deaf children from growing into contributing members of our community. During this investigation, I call that you act on the following, included but not limited to: One, IEP compliance with the focus on individual children's needs that include best practices, design-for-deaf children, appropriately completed communication plans that also represent DHH state learning standards. Two, an audit into CBM progress monitoring data and ensuring that research-based tools designed for DHH learners focused on language and literacy development are represented and utilized to develop appropriate IEPs. Three, a probe into design reform of cluster-site schools and securing certified and highly qualified staff at all grade levels and holding those accountable for academic achievement. Four, a probe into the instructional framework currently being implemented with DHH students that result in a call for massive reform, beginning with the people currently making harmful decisions. Five, pursuing and implementing alternative technologies specifically designed for signing deaf children with a special investigation on the usability of video remote interpreting, VRI cloud services, and collaborating with other nearby districts where certified ASL interpreters are more aptly available and reduce costs. Will you help us share our vision? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Diana Cobble is up, and then Jamie Freeland is on deck. Oh, Jamie Freeland.
My name is Diana Cobble. I'm a college professor of American Sign Language and a board member of the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Youth Advocate Coalition of Polk County. I want to share a story that reflects a quiet but heartbreaking reality. A foster mother once told me the little boy in her care came home from his first day of kindergarten in tears. He kept showing this gesture. That's the sign for "I don't know." At school, he couldn't understand his teachers or his classmates, and they couldn't understand him. You see, he's deaf. Despite being bright and eager to learn, he had been deprived of language. Surrounded by moving mouths and flash cards with pictures, he had been denied the tools to truly communicate. That's what language deprivation looks like, a child being left out, not because of ability, but because of inaccessibility. Neural connections for language form rapidly from birth to age two. Between ages three and five, children can still gain native fluency if given rich exposure, but by age seven, the critical period passes, and the brain's ability to acquire language naturally begins to close. Without consistent visual language access during that window, a deaf child's brain misses the input it needs to build a strong foundation for all future learning. When deaf and hard-of-hearing students grow up without full language access, the effects last a lifetime in academics, literacy, social and emotional growth, and even independence. But when they're given access through families who learn to sign, teachers who provide direct instruction in their first or heart language, native deaf role models and inclusive classrooms, they thrive. Polk County's mission is students first. Without signing teachers, qualified language role models, and IEPs that are driven by each child's language needs rather than limited resources, deaf students are in danger of finishing last. I respectfully urge the board to review the structure and leadership of the current deaf and hard-of-hearing program. While ESC directors and managers bring strong expertise in exceptional education, deaf students have unique linguistic and cultural needs that require specialized deaf education leadership with authority in district decision-making. Structuring a successful deaf education program requires more than staffing teachers or providing interpreters. It means building a system that ensures language access, communication equity, and cultural inclusion beginning in early childhood. It is essential that our decision-makers listen to experts in deaf education, both within and outside of this county, to create a program that truly serves these students. We're ready to partner with you. Thank you for your commitment to putting students first.
Thank you, Ms. Cobble. Jamie Freeland is up, and then on deck, we have Joan Slevin.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all by being here. Being on the school board is not an easy task, especially with the limited time and resources, and working to meet an ever-growing demand to make Polk County a successful and competitive place to raise and teach children. I can only imagine that your days have become long and eyes have become weary. Thank you for allowing us to speak and maybe shed some light on why we are here. My wife, sitting there, is currently the president of the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Youth Advocate Coalition here in Polk County. I serve as the vice president. I would like to read a short message on behalf of my wife and then myself. My wife's message. I am a byproduct of the DHH program in Polk County schools. I was mainstreaming hearing classes with an interpreter, and many of my classes were honor classes throughout junior, high, and high school. I went on to obtain two degrees and have a successful 26-year and counting working career, and none of this would have happened without the education I received through my interpreters. They were my lifelines. In light of Chris's situation, he needs the same kind of access I had in order to be able to succeed academically, to be equivalent to his hearing peers. He also needs to be around other deaf students to meet social needs. He deserves to have his education where he can flourish with certified interpreters and/or a certified teacher who knows how to teach deaf students in their language, which is ASL. My message. I am a CODA. I am a child of deaf adults. Both my parents are deaf. My dad has been legally blind for most of my childhood. He is now completely blind. I grew up signing ASL as my native language, and at four years old, I began learning English. After many years of speech therapy, and being difficult to speak in front of all of you, I apologize, wonderful public school teachers. I became a teacher myself. I've been teaching on and off since 1999 here in Lakeland. The only times I did not teach in the classroom was when I was in train-ups on active duty. I did three combat deployments, two in Afghanistan, one in Iraq. I currently teach math to students with dyslexia, and I see that they struggle in learning to read and write. This truly impacts their life in a profound way, and that's what students who can hear. I cannot imagine how it must be for students who cannot. My father has a first-grade reading level. My mom was around sixth grade. I have seen firsthand their struggles to find and maintain decent jobs. Children like Chris need access to their language so they can use it to learn English so they can become successful and not become a statistic. Students first.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Joan is up now, and Ava Hines is on deck.
We are the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Youth Advocate Coalition of Polk County, otherwise known as DHJAC. We come from a variety of backgrounds. Some of us are hearing, some are deaf, some are hard-of-hearing, some of us are fluent in ASL, some of us don't know sign language at all. We are... We are members of the deaf community, DHH teachers, ASL instructors, ASL interpreters, students of ASL, students who are deaf or hard of hearing, CODAs, and parents of DHH students. Our mission statement is to support deaf and hard of hearing youth in Polk County through services and activities that address their linguistic, social, and emotional needs to help prepare them for independence and for the future. We are a resource that can work with the Polk County School Board to address concerns which have been festering for years, with some people being unaware of the issues. How do you teach a language which is auditory, like English, to a child who cannot hear or who has gaps in their hearing? A deaf or hard of hearing child does not learn the same way a hearing child does. Exposure to a visual language is crucial for primary language development. We start talking to a hearing child from a moment they're born. It doesn't matter that they cannot understand us yet. We are giving them exposure to the language. They're constantly being exposed to conversations around them as well as radio and television. This is called incidental learning. Did you know that 80% to 90% of language is acquired through incidental learning? DHH students do not get incidental learning of English like their hearing peers do. The result is called the Swiss cheese effect. This quote describes the language skills of the DHH students who has unpredictable knowledge gaps in the academic and language concepts. Depending on the source, the crucial language learning years are from birth to around six years of age. That is why our young DHH students, especially those who are profoundly deaf, need to have qualified ASL interpreters in classrooms. This gives the DHH students the vital exposure to their visual language and facilitates communication between the DHH students, their teachers, other staff members, and their hearing peers. Yes, qualified credentials, ASL interpreters are hard to come by. I am well aware of that because I am one of them. That's another conversation. Want to know more about how a deaf person learns, about their community and deaf culture, about their robust and living language, which has over 200 years of history in the United States? Then talk to a person who is deaf. Don't know American Sign Language? That's okay. I'll be happy to interpret for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joan. Ava Hines is up, and then on deck, we have Carrie Lynn Moore.
Before you start my timer, do you mind making sure the interpreter is visible in the camera? Because I have had deaf and hard of hearing people watching online tonight texting me all night, telling me that they cannot see. Do you mind making sure the interpreter is completely visible? Face, body, hands, everything, please. Thank you so much. When students are provided with language, they thrive. What you probably forgot is that Polk County has passed deaf and hard of hearing students who are very successful. Some even have master's degrees and PhDs. Why? Because they were given access to their natural language. Many of those students were not provided that access because Polk County Public Schools was unable to provide proper accommodations. Those students instead left and attended Florida School for the Deaf and Blind, a school where they are accepted and embraced, not excluded and oppressed. Some current K-12 students have had to leave for the same reason. Currently, that I know of, there are at least six former Polk deaf and hard of hearing students in college to earn their bachelor's degrees. Most of them are out of state or out of town, but I know at least one of them is here tonight to speak to you. Earlier tonight, you said you wanted to celebrate student achievement and foster student growth. Why not celebrate and uplift your deaf and hard of hearing students the same way you do for your hearing students? Polk County Public Schools claims to focus on excellence and students first, but from our perspective, the Polk County Public Schools truly focuses on exclusion, and deaf and hard of hearing students are the very last priority. Earlier tonight, you asked a hearing student about his future plans, his name, his family, his culture, his favorite sport. You even gave him verbal encouragement. I challenge you. Show your deaf and hard of hearing students that you care about them. Talk to them. Ask them questions, the same questions you asked that young boy tonight. They have dreams, hopes, and aspirations, but they are often made to feel that they are not worthy of your attention simply because they cannot hear. One such student is Chris. He is being deprived of a future. He is being deprived of the human rights of language and communication. Polk County Public Schools is failing him. Little changes, like having interpreters available and clearly visible, are all that's needed to allow your deaf and hard of hearing students to achieve just as much success as your hearing students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. We have Carrie Lynn Moore up, and then Gabrielle Ortiz.
Can you hear me? I've noticed a lot of the deaf children, it's very important from the age three and up for them to have to be able to learn and study and make those connections the hearing kids can make so automatically. But with the deaf kids, they're just left alone, and they focus on the hearing kids to teach them. They have no language, but the deaf kids are left alone. The interpreter has to come to them and interpret to them to make sure they can develop equally and have access to education the same as the hearing kids. My own grandson is two, and he tries, we tried to enroll him in school here, and he got denied an interpreter because he's three years old because it's important that he didn't have access to the same education as the hearing kids. And my daughter decided to move so that he could go to another school that would provide him an interpreter, and it's wonderful to see how much he has flourished. And having equal access to these resources, I can see the difference between him at three years old and having to teach him more to develop his language and an interpreter who paid attention and really made him work and pay attention and learn and to have that language development. He wasn't able to be distracted by everybody else. By the time he was five, he was ready for kindergarten, the same as his hearing peers. The interpreter made sure that he looked and paid attention. It was an easier process. He wasn't set aside and cast away and left to just play on his own. By the time he was five years old, the interpreter would be saying he would be telling, he would have to look, he would be so behind. But when he started language now, I can see the language deprivation that affects the other children and the loss of education, and they have no future anywhere in that situation. For me, I work, I've worked for a long time advocating for the students here. I've been here for a very long time doing this, and now they removed me and changed my rule, so now I'm out working with the deaf kids. It's extremely frustrating to see where I am, and they pulled me out, and it's not right. It's completely heartbreaking to me to see the struggle and want to advocate and support and being told, no, I can't. I, they stole my motivation, they stole my reason for working here. I've always advocated for education. I know how important it is as a deaf person. I know how important it is for them to see me, that I am a successful deaf person, and that they can be as well, to grow and to succeed in life. And they look at me and see pride of what they can do. You can get a job. You don't have to be put down.
Thank you, Ms. Gabrielle Ortiz, and then we have Sheri Spigner.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle. I'm my second year in college, and I am deaf. Every day of my life is shaped by the education I receive growing up in Polk County and education that is now being taken away from others. I speak three languages, Spanish, English, and American Sign Language. I love both English and Sign Language at Southwest Middle School in Lakeland from a certified teacher in deaf education. My closest friend came from the community we built in our deaf classroom. Every class I attend today has an interpreter, something I will not be able to use or appreciate without that foundation. When I see deaf students denied the opportunity I had, I see them be led to believe that failure comes from being deaf, but really, it is because they don't get the basic support they need in a Polk that support is no longer guaranteed anymore. The quality of deaf education program in Polk County gets worse each year, but those students are still there. While school way too out, there is a seven-years-old sitting lost in a class where they cannot learn or talk, and an 11-years-old wondering when they will be back with their friend who understands their story and their culture. Every day becomes another day of learning lost. You could say I was lucky, lucky to have cochlear and cochlear teacher, trainer, and interpreter, but a child should not be, a child should not need luck to get a good education or fair treatment. Polk County School must give every child the opportunity to grow and feel welcome at school. We are heartbroken to see deaf students being left behind in low-grade, not enough interpreter, and the loss of the classroom that helped us succeed before. A deaf child in post should not, should have the opportunity to succeed as a hearing child. It should not be where or a story of luck. It should be normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Sheri Spigner, and then on deck, we have Kim Bodnar.
Sorry, I'm short. Good evening. My name is Sheri Spigner, and I'm speaking to you today from a unique perspective, as I'm a parent of two deaf daughters. They're now adults, and I'm also a retired educational sign language interpreter, and I'm an emotional wreck. Anyway, my message to this board is to let you know that deaf can. With the right tools, deaf can be successful. I'm going to tell you about three young ladies who have proven that, two of which are my daughters, but I'm just going to give you a real highlight here. The first one, we'll name Jay. She graduated high school. She got her bachelor's degree in education. She got a master's degree in counseling, a second master's degree in data analysis, currently works for a major corporation as a UX designer and an advocate for accessibility, and she earns more than probably everybody in this room. The second one is R. She graduated from high school, has a bachelor's degree in American Sign Language, she has a master's degree in Sign Language Education, and she's currently a tenured professor at the college level. She earns an excellent salary and is independent. The third graduated from high school, got a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's in science, a PhD in educational neuroscience, and currently works as a research scientist studying how deaf children's brains develop visually differently when they use visual language versus a sign language. So what do all three of these girls have in common? They all went to Polk County Public Schools. Back in the day, when the program was excellent. Back in the day when they had early intervention that came to the families and helped them. Back in the day where they had a dedicated preschool environment for deaf only. Back in the day where the DHH teachers had a resource room and the DHH teachers were in control of how the students learned. And also, back in the day when the administration of that school embraced the deaf child and embraced what their capabilities are and what they could do, and they respected the teachers' opinions and let the teachers decide what was best for that child. Currently, the lack of program that Polk County Public Schools has does not provide these essentials. Denying an elementary DHH resource classroom with a teacher who understands how deaf children think, denying access to academics through qualified interpreters in a mainstream class, and at a minimum, these are things that a deaf child needs. The young ladies mentioned above would not be able to be where they are today and have made these goals in their life and had become independent productive members of society without the Polk County DHH education. Let's give these tools to the kids that are in this generation now so that they can have a future, because the decisions that are being made on their behalf right now are their future, and you can destroy their future by not allowing them full access. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheri. We have Kim Bodnar that's up, and then Stephanie Yocum is on deck.
My name is Kim Bodnar. I'm the middle school teacher at Southwest Middle. I've been there for seven years. I tried to prepare a speech, but I'm just all over the place, so I'm just going to wing it. There's only two of us left in Polk County. There's one at the high school and myself at the middle school. I'm not sure if what I say is going to move you any differently or if I'm just going to echo what others have already said for me. I wanted to talk to you from a teacher's perspective of the deaf and hard of hearing and as an interpreter's perspective. This program was being established 40 years ago, close to 40 years ago, and from my understanding, it was a thriving program. Students were graduating. They were able to read and write and do math. They had successful careers. I've been here seven years, as mentioned, and I'm not seeing that now. These kids are coming up from elementary school, and they are not able to read or write or math or do anything independently. They're severely lacking on skills of that of their peers. Mainly, this is because of the lack of language access that they may have, and now I'm hearing that they're being told they're not, they're not allowed to have interpreters anymore because they can hear enough. They have a cochlear. They have hearing aids. That does not justify not having an interpreter for their access to language. So let me go back to my point here. So, let's see. So when I first started at Polk County School seven years ago, I noticed right away that there was a huge crack in this system. It was broken, and I tried furiously to try to fix it, just like any other new teacher that comes in and says, I'm going to fix this problem. And I was met with resistance again and again. Over the years, this program has been chipped away at, and the crack is growing wider and These kids are being enrolled on day one, and they're being pushed through the system as fast as they can without giving them the services they need or require to be successful in life. Their language is different. Their culture is different. The way they learn is different. Their identity is different. It takes specialized people that have the knowledge and the, sorry, and the ability to not only communicate with these special kids by working with them and helping them to learn academically, but be, yes, to have that specialized skill to work with them and communicate with them and help them succeed. Our elementary schools that are not, or students that are not receiving interpreter services right now, like I said, they're entering middle school. Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Yocum's up, and then we have Barbara Shabber Leggie.
My name is Stephanie Yocum. I'm the president of the Polk Education Association, and last night, we had our fourth bargaining session. I would love to be here tonight celebrating a tentative agreement, but yet here we are with no tentative agreement and a 1% wage counter for all staff from your management team. What you are getting to you tonight is our counterproposal from, sorry, from October 1st, when we had agreed to look at the different hiring numbers, and the management team and the union team agreed to different numbers than what we had agreed to on August 26th, but we acquiesced that you did hire about 400 more people, so we recalculated our offer. Based on what you see before you, between the salary increase that we received last year that proposed cost $25.1 million with benefits, the same salary schedule with different people on it, it is costing you just under nine, you're saving $9 million on the same salary agreement that we ratified last spring. And so we readjusted our counter to 2.5%, which is well within what you can afford, even with no new money from the state. And we do, are asking together that we advocate very aggressively that this state fund public education, because we cannot continue to go down this path of a less than a 1% increase on the base student allocation and think that we can fund all the things that we actually need to fund. So we need to partner together on that legislative platform because they are killing public schools intentionally. But I digress. So the offer of 1% is unacceptable. That is, for a pair of $17 a month before taxes. $17 a month. Seventeen dollars a month. So what we're looking at here is the district, your management team is only wanting to put one point seven million dollars of their own money into this pot and include the three point four million dollars of the state increase allocation for teachers that only some teachers qualify for. And so what we are proposing with a two and a half percent raise would cost you twelve million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. That's with benefits and you're only six point one million dollars away from being able to fund that. That's half of a percent of your fund balance and we're not even asking for that because you are saving eight point eight million dollars on the salary increases that we had already ratified last year. And so that minus the, you know, one point seven and the one point five with some of the other fringe offers, minus the TSIA, this is well within your budget to make this happen. A two and a half percent raise is well within your means, it's well within the budget that you've already passed and it is about what we're seeing across central Florida. Some more, some less. Do the right thing.
Ms. Yocum. Ms. Shabel Leggie and then we have Beverly Stokum.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Barbara Shabel Leggie and I come before you tonight as a concerned community member and as a coordinator for the Pastor's Prayer Fellowship of Winter Haven. I care deeply about our schools, our teachers, and most of all, our children. This is the first school board meeting since the incident that has shaken many of us in this community. A kindergarten teacher at Floral Avenue Elementary sang this so-called birthday song to a six-year-old black boy and I will not sing the whole song. Happy birthday to you, you belong in a, and almost everybody in here knows the finish of that song. This child was devastated. He didn't feel celebrated, he felt humiliated. He told his parents he didn't want to go back to school. Now, imagine being a six-year-old child and already feeling that school is a place of shame instead of joy. I understand that some have said that this teacher might sing that same version of the song to every child in her class regardless of race, but let's be clear, that does not make this right. Mocking a child in front of their peers is never acceptable. It is demeaning and it cuts deeply into a child's sense of worth and belonging. What makes this situation even more troubling is that the teacher recorded the song and sent it to the child's mother. That act not only confirmed that the incident took place, but it also demonstrated a troubling lack of judgment and sensitivity. Since the story became public, we've learned that the teacher received only a written reprimand. She remains in her position. While I do not question her years of service or deny that she may be loved by her students, I must say this. Longevity does not erase responsibility. The longer one has served, the higher the standard should be because experience should bring wisdom, compassion, and care. At the very least, this teacher should have been placed on administrative leave during the investigation. That would have protected both the teacher's due process and the children's emotional safety. This is not about punishment for punishment's sake. It is about accountability, fairness, and healing. It is about ensuring that every child, regardless of race or background, is treated with dignity and respect. This board now has an opportunity to demonstrate leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Leggie.
The only notes I have are this sixty-page copy of the original Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea. These are the laws that we're supposed to follow. I am a retired Polk County School Board Sign Language Interpreter. I interpreted for thirty years for Polk County School Board. During that time, I struggled through PEA to get fair wages for sign language interpreters. We were paid as paraprofessionals. We are professionals. Thank you. I believe sign language interpreters are still under the umbrella of paraprofessionals if I'm not mistaken. Did it change? That changed, thank goodness. I was successful with the help of many other people at getting like an eight thousand dollar a year raise for most of the interpreters, which was still not quite commensurate with the wages that other counties in our area or that community interpreters earn. But that was a great step in the right direction. I'm not sure they've ever gotten another raise since then. Maybe they have. I had the honor and privilege of interpreting for some of the students you heard about that are successes today and we were promised that we would have a pay grade for certified interpreters. There was none. No one was going to, they'd say, oh, well, when we get one, we'll create that pay grade. Well, no one's going to apply without the pay grade, so I thought, well, by golly, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and get in there and work and become certified. And by golly, I did. Two years after I became certified, there was finally a certified interpreter pay grade in place. So I'm grateful for that and I'm so grateful for where Polk County was years ago. We need to get back there. We need to care about the students. Give them a chance. I learned math in the crib. I remember figuring out how to count because I was hearing. I heard everything. I had input. Deaf kids don't have that. They need sign language. They need language models. They need interpreters and deaf ed teachers with ASL experience. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us out. Thank you so much for the care. I know you want to put students first. Please, please have the heart for deaf students.
Thank you, Ms. Stokum. Board members, next order of business is adjournment. There being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned. Thank you.